Okay, so next on the agenda, we had scheduled a conversation on equity legislation. So when this was requested previously, I think we probably thought that we'd be farther along on what that legislation was going to look like. Since this bill was just signed on Tuesday, we obviously don't have guidance for you on what the interpretation is going to be or what that's going to look like. But Thomas is just going to walk through just kind of the high level language and give you an opportunity to ask questions. But by the next board meeting, we'll have some more definitive guidance for you on what that means. So timing here kind of caught us a little bit, but we still wanted to make sure we addressed it. We also have, also, also, we also have Robert here. If there's, you know, Q and A or any questions from a national landscape you'd like to ask at the end, but I'm going to turn over to Thomas for just sort of the overview and then certainly any questions that you have in the process, let us know. Thank you, Thomas.
I'm going to start with my three words. Sort of explain my lens that I personally view this through because each person is going to interact with House File 802 in a different way. But my three words are education saves lives. And my entree into this work was from, as a poverty law litigator, Iowa Legal Aid in Waterloo. And my initial lens on equity is through income and wealth and intergenerational wealth and in the lack of intergenerational wealth. So that was my lens that opened up my personal journey onto all other issues of inequity in society. So that's where I'm coming from. And I think where we come from, where each Iowan comes from, when interacting with this bill is going to be important. And this is important in the department as we attempt to reflect this legislation because this is binding. But reflected in a way that fits in state board priorities, since it's a department priorities and a lot of the other things that Mr. Holmes said earlier this morning. We had a sidebar where 26 states saw some version of this bill. So some of our guidance and some of our interaction might be how other states treat this bill.
Yeah.
This bill, if it is enacted.
Yeah.
So with that, no promises that what I say will be final. This is, again, Director Lebo reminded us that this bill, two days old. And it goes into effect. So I want.
And maybe just one quick, just general reminder. So at the end of every session, there's lots of legislation that's passed and signed. And so then it becomes our job to work through those and issue guidance to schools. So this is one of many, but they're not always signed at the same time. So knowing that this one is just very recent, you know, you're, we'll have the opportunity to go through the collective guidance with you on all the legislation that impacts schools, but that will be a little bit down the road. So we just, the timing of this again is an opportunity just to review the high level pieces that are in there, knowing that there's going to be a lot more depth going forward. And that's, that's a substantial process too, working through the legislative language and then what that means for implementation. Yeah. On all things. Okay, sorry. Yes.
So there's three big chunks. There's a chunk that applies to state and local law, including the judicial branch, trainings provided by the county supervisors, trainings provided by a city to its employees, by a county to its employees, by the judicial branch to juvenile court officers. There is a portion that applies to higher education, public higher education. And then there is a portion that applies to schools. And they have parallel structures. They all apply to training. But at least for higher ed and for school districts, there are carve outs for courses of work or plans of instruction. Training on certain topics in training is off limits. Academic discussion, not off limits. And one of the pieces of guidance is where is that? How to navigate, is this a required staff development? Or is this a part of broader academic instruction? Again, the personal is political here. Graduate of the University of Iowa College of Law has a course entitled Critical Race Studies, Critical Legal Studies, and a course called Critical Race Feminist. Could those two courses still be taught? Yes, they're not mandatory. Could discussions of racism or sexism occur in other law school courses? Yes, so long as they don't intrude into some of these defined concepts. So the meta question is, to what does this apply? Does this apply to everything? Or does it apply to required mandatory training versus a course of instruction? And where, where is that line? So briefly, the concepts that are specified, race and sex scapegoating, assigning fault, blame, or bias to a race or sex, or to a members of the race or sex, or claiming that consciously or unconsciously, and by virtue of a person's race or sex, members of any race are inherently racist, or inherently inclined to oppress, or members of a sex are inherently sexist, or inclined to oppress others. Does that mean oppression cannot be discussed? No. Does it mean that oppression cannot be discussed in mandatory trainings in this way? Yes. So that's, that's sort of the line that we're just going to have to navigate through through the guidance process. And as this develops over time. Another prohibited topic is race or sex stereotyping, describing character traits, values, moral, ethical codes, privilege, or status, or beliefs to a race, or an individual because of the race or sex. Other specific concepts, that one race or sex is inherently superior to another race or sex, that the United States of America and the state of Iowa are fundamentally or systemically racist or sexist. Does that prohibit saying that the United States has never done racist things? My law professor, who was in a Japanese internment camp, might say differently. But there's the, this, the United States has the ability to self-correct. The same Supreme Court that decided, plus he versus Ferguson, decided Brown versus Board of Education.
Back, what's the premise of the bill again? It's saying that you can't have training that includes these materials. Is that what you're saying from a definitional perspective?
From a definitional perspective, that a mandatory training cannot include these concepts. Another thing that will be, I'll finish the concepts and I will go to a couple more areas where guidance will be needed. Then an individual, that an individual solely because of the individual's race or sex is inherently racist, sexist, or oppressive, whether consciously or unconsciously. And an individual should be discriminated against or receive adverse treatment solely or partly because of the individual's race or sex. That members of one race or one sex cannot and should not attempt to treat others without respect to race or sex. The next defined concept, that an individual's moral character is necessarily determined by the individual's race or sex. That an individual, by virtue of the individual's race or sex, bears responsibility for actions committed in the past by other members of that individual's race or sex. That an individual should feel discomfort, guilt, or anguish, or any other form of psychological distress on account of that individual's race or sex. That meritocracy or traits such as a hard worth work ethic are racist or sexist, or created by a particular race to oppress. And then any other lawyers, catch all, any other form of race or sex scapegoating or state. Mandatory training is prohibited on these topics.
How do they define mandatory training?
They don't. And that's, that's something.
Part of the process.
Part of the process.
Yeah.
So if I'm taking a, if I'm taking a voluntary certification to renew a voluntary certification that my employer does not require me to have.
Right.
I think that's outside the, and I'm not receiving it from a public agency. I'm not receiving it from the judicial branch or administrative services. I think that that's outside the law.
Do your CLAs count?
Depending on who provides. So continuing legal act, who is providing those? And are those being provided to employees versus somebody who signs up to take them? One final point about training is the trainer is not prohibited from answering questions. And I think that is something that is going to be closely scrutinized. You know? If I'm a trainer, I'm truthfully responsible. But in what lens does that truthful response, how, lawyer, these are words, how, how am I going to ensure that my answer stays in safe harbor? That is as compliant with the bill as possible? So those are just some of the brief issues on a high level that I've, that I have identified. Again, this is only less than 48 hours old.
So what's the consequence? What, what?
Well, that's another thing.
Is this a criminal statute?
No, it's not a criminal statute. And it does not create.
Is it a licensing statute there?
I think that again is part of the guidance, but I will say that it specifically excludes a private right of action.
Okay. So what, what is? You don't do this, but then if you do, then nothing.
It doesn't allow a private right of action.
Right. There's no.
Interesting.
I don't have an individual, it may be something that the department is required to enforce because it is in the school laws of the state of Iowa.
Say that.
Yeah, it's housed in chapter 279.
So then you have an, yeah.
I understand. I mean, I haven't read it yet.
Yeah.
And I will, before the end of the day, I will forward this or ask somebody to forward it to, or might have a broader discussion of it during the legislative update. But it, it's not something that an individual could take private action to enforce. However, I think that there's going to be some enforcement responsibility on behalf because of where it is housed, both, both for community, both for the portion that impacts community colleges, as well as public school institutions.
So we could write a, we could write a penalty such as you will lose your job if you decide to public school.
And I don't know if we could do that because, I mean, I, I don't know if we could do that because we're not in charge of hiring and firing. But we could, again, very high level, entirely hypothetical. During desk audits, do you have a policy and procedure? Do you have a school board policy that incorporates House File 802?
Sure.
And does it have a meaningful enforcement mechanism? This, this bill had a companion regarding free speech and higher education. It had much more robust penalties. This bill lacks those, those robust penalties. So part of that is, if we're in charge, again, entirely hypothetical, subject to change through guidance, but what is the department going to ensure to do to, and what are this, what does the state board direct the department to ensure that this and only this is? So does this bill become both a fore and a sealer?
The, the other thing, when you think from the individual accountability standpoint, is that this becomes a, a state law that folds into the BOE requirements and an individual that violates those state or federal requirements is subject to disciplinary action potentially there. So there's two different scopes. There's kind of, you think of us as the accreditation oversight in terms of how it's done. There is potential individual implications from that standpoint, but it's the, the the details that, that really have yet to, to unfold. And, and with anything, you know, you, there's this general scope of oversight and there's not any possibility to, to weigh down into every specific scenario. And we won't know that until, you know, this sort of plays out, but we'll have to be really clear on what our authority and guidance is at this higher level, highest level as we, you know, districts are looking for guidance on this in terms of what it will mean going forward.
Thomas, will you be working with IASB with their policy development? How does that, do you share ideas or how does that come about? Because IASB will be issuing some policies to schools.
Right. And historically, the holder of my office has worked very closely with the office that's now occupied by the Schpatz higher. So in, as far as developing policies and making sure that the sample policies that IASB offers are.
So I've been, since this bill came about, I've been struggling to make sense of it with my peers, with my teachers off the record, and with community members, especially with its companion about free speech. And so I'm still struggling to make sense of it even after it's been passed. But one of the things that came up in a question that I had is, I mean, when the Department of Education goes in and does the reviews, right? Is that the only time you're asking about this? Or is this based on student reporting? Because if a student feels any discomfort in their class, are they able to report their teacher for that? Or how does that, how, how is reporting based? Because if it's based on student reporting, I mean, that's going to be pretty unreliable and teachers are going to be put between a rock and a hard place.
And so again, I think that that's a, an issue that needs to be captured and addressed through guidance.
Yeah.
Because what we, this is designed to be a shield, not to be a sword.
Yeah.
And so making claims that I, he said something that I felt was oppressive, or that I felt straight into one of these specified concepts. This bill has a projected test quality to it. It's a Rorschach test and you bring to it your personal perspectives.
Yeah.
And I think that's one of the leadership roles that the department is going to have is to get the, get the needle to Appleboys, get it, get it on center because at least somebody here at the department took a phone call yesterday from somebody who was told that this bill means that Black Lives Matter is. I think that that's a, to me, again, I haven't had time to reflect on the bill.
Yeah. I, my frustration is just, this has been out there for a while. We've had at least two meetings since this bill was proposed. Why did we not have this discussion earlier? Because this is a really important bill. It stopped our work as the Equity Committee for the Department of Education. It has stopped my mom's work with weight bias trainings in her community to help child, prevent childhood obesity. And it has stopped a lot of different efforts that we put in our school. And I'm, I can give you my perspective, right? My family's divided. One of my parents is really conservative and one of my parents is pretty liberal. And I have to deal, the only place that I get exposed to these ideas is at school. It's the discussions they have at school are very meaningful and very eye opening. And when you, when this is, this opportunity is taken out of school, it's kind of frustrating. This bill is confusing. And I think that it was a really important one that we as a department or we as a board should have taken action on earlier. And so why did we not bring this up and discuss it and make sense of it before it was passed to the legislator and before it was signed by the governor?
Sure. And, and part of the reason why we sort of purposely delayed all of those discussions for legislation is that we don't know until there's final language, because lots of things are going to happen in the process. So we have general concepts and we certainly bring those up and we touch upon those. But even for us, when we get questions from the field, you have to be very cautious before you give sort of definitive answers because until it's actually signed, you don't really know what the final version is going to be. You can have ideas, you have general con, you know, concepts of what it would be. So you have to be careful as sort of a regulatory agency in terms of how far you go down that path. You know, when we put this on the agenda, the assumption is that we thought there would be something sooner, more definitive that we could address. And the timing becomes complicated as well. So I think part of this is that simply ensuring, you know, once we do get into the conversation, you know, at, at, at two days old, we can read the language to you, but we can't give you guidance on it yet because there's a lot of work that has to happen. Because this, it is complicated.
Yeah. You know? It was, and so.
I think it's purposely written to be confused. So before we, you know, you're, and some of your asking questions that we're not prepared to answer yet, and we have to be careful how we answer them. So before we have any of that conversation, as your department, we have to make sure we have an understanding of where the lines are and what the interpretation is intended to be so that we can help walk you through that conversation. Or we could get it wrong and we could, we could, I think, make the issue more complicated. So all completely understood and the frustration, I, I certainly understand, but that's sort of has to be our responsibility and how we help work, help move this work forward.
Can I ask some more of a proactive thoughts?
One thing.
Yeah.
What I hear you saying, and you can tell me that I'm wrong, is why didn't we discuss it and try to influence it? Is that, yeah?
That's because.
During the process.
I think that we've discussed today with the presentation before this, that we do have influence on policy. And this is one that's going to have a huge impact in schools, whether we like it or not. Depending on how we implement it, it will have more or less of an impact. But by the time that it was proposed, we could see that it was going to have an impact. We could see that it was being moved through the legislator. We could see that people were in support of the bill. Why did we not discuss this earlier?
So can, can we take that same train of thought? And then wanted to just kind of go through the very prior presentation with Robert Hall. Since we do have responsibilities listed and it says to advocate as a board, how does that look like? What's the protocol? Because I, I kind of struggle, you know, here I am, the Equity Chair Committee, I see, I know this is coming down a pipe. I struggle, I, you know, I, how do you, what is the protocol? Just what is, first, we have to have a one voice. So one is like getting our, getting everyone's point of view. How do you do that? What's appropriate? Hey, we have, and, and we have great legislative resources. You know, every Friday, we have someone that's talking about all these bills. But, you know, we know this one is going to impact, you know, we have school systems that have, I mean, they have like over 100 languages. And this bill came from a source that didn't have that problem, Ms. Gudis, that's why I struggled a little bit with it. But going forward, what is that protocol? How do we go as a board, there's certain legislation that we know is going to impact? How, what's that, what's that protocol? I, I still don't know how to go by doing that. Because as a chair of the Equity Committee, I, I feel like I, I know I own that responsibility to probably, to be more proactive. I was so frustrated by it pausing. I didn't know how to handle that, right? I didn't really know. I just, I was, I was stuck. I felt stuck and I didn't, and I just froze.
So I think that's, and we haven't really, like I said, we haven't really done anything legislatively. And so I think that with this bill, I'm, I mean, I think that in the future, if something like this comes up, I understand, like this is something that, you know, and this is kind of where we have kind of, you know, I mean, we have the, I think the department has their priorities, but we as state board have our priorities too. And sometimes they might be a little bit different and that's okay, right? But we have the power to convene. And I think that we just have to remember that we have to act as a collective voice. So if everyone's on board with it, you know, but we have the power to convene, we can, we can go to the governor if we want to, if we want to talk about submitting this, you know, I mean, we have the power to do that. I mean, you're all appointed by the governor. It's no reason why a state board can't meet with the governor or the chair and the vice chair can't meet with the governor or legislators about certain things. But we just have to remember that we can't act as individuals, right? So that's why I think legislative committee would probably be best to handle situations like this, because then you have a kind of a channel to do this and not everyone's just kind of off doing their own thing, which is not what we want at all, right? And then there's kind of like a focus thing, but we haven't had that. We haven't really advocated or done any of that, like really. I mean, Mary Ellen kind of used to, she, she used to have really be our advocate over there and she had connections over there. And I know that you've made some with the Equity Committee and you have senators.
They're on our committee. That's the thing. That's so weird though, right? We have Senator, Senator on our committee. And then he introduced us and opened us the doors of a few others. But then, you know, what's the protocol in that? Like he, he comes to us and he brings this, he brings, and it's a great opportunity, but at the exact same time, well, how does it get to this board? You know, do we send them meeting minutes and then you ask questions? What, what is that protocol? Because it came, it came to us and there was an opportunity and a platform for us to at least have a discussion. It could have still came the same result, but at least have a voice. I felt like we didn't even get a voice out there.
And.
And then what, what is that collective voice? I don't even know what the voice is. I know the committee's collective voice.
And that's why I think having a legislative committee who comes and report, just a committee, because I think that the Equity Committee probably shouldn't, you know, because I think that having a legislative committee that's only doing that work and reporting to the board and then kind of taking a pulse of the board and then taking that back to legislators or even the governor's office or whatever is probably the way you had a, sorry.
I was just going to say, I don't know that this answers your question, but in the past, we've met with the legislators, in the past, the governor has come to the board and talked to us. My problem with previous approach has been that it's always after the legislative session has begun. And the time to talk, in my opinion, to legislators is in September and October. Time to talk to the governor is in September and October because they're putting together their legislative priorities, their plans, et cetera. And if, if, I think if we had more discussion early on, we might have more input. Now, I do think the meeting with the governor, even after the session had started and the legislators, goes to Mike's point, and that is building relationships with the legislators. And so I think that was a good thing. But in terms of policy, I don't think it had any impact on policy. It was just too late.
Yeah.
Most of these bills, I believe, are crafted two or three months before the legislature even begins. So maybe somehow connecting with the speaker and the majority leader in the Senate, they certainly would have a sense of some of the legislative things that are going on that affect education. Now, when they would be to us, I don't know.
It also has to be more than just like a, a one, you know, I know one time a year thing. You can't build relationships like that.
And, and Shan, correct me if I'm wrong. I know for this year, we had, you know, when Josh Burns was on the board, we had, he was sort of identified as being part of that process. And then he, he was done. And so I think that, that sort of disrupted, I think there's probably a couple of things that disrupted it this year, but I think it's absolutely, and, and maybe I need to get some more background on how you did it previously too, that you have to have that continuous, whoever it is, as part of that legislative team. And setting up those relationships and having the meetings early on, said that there is a process for communication. So certainly lots of things we can do better in terms of how we communicate and prioritize our work. And these are things we need to maybe, you know, start having the conversations about now so we can be a little more coordinated going forward.
Brooke, you know, in my, my time on the board, we haven't really had functioning subcommittees. We kind of tried with the legislative committee, which fell apart. And then we kind of tried with the Equity Committee, which took a pause. I think, I think as a board, subcommittees are really valuable or can be really valuable. But if we're going to do that, then I do think we need to have some conversation about how those subcommittees operate, what their roles are, how that gets fed to the full board, how does information? And we've never really had that because we've never really had functioning subcommittees. So I think that's, this is a long conversation that we need to have.
I agree.
If that's, if that's the direction we want to go, is use subcommittees.
Yeah. And part of this, I think, you know, when we, later this afternoon, work on your board goals and priorities, you meet your subgroups. I mean, one of the pieces of that is that we, we wordsmith things, but we don't have the accountability piece out. Part of the work today is to identify that. This conversation really ties to some of that work. If that's your priority, then maybe have a new priority. Maybe, maybe this, today's work has shifted some of that. I would, I would, in your small groups, talk about that. If, if how we coordinate our work and prioritize your actions shifts to those goals, I would bring that up at three, just as we think about it now. And that might help us redefine some of the things that we do going forward. You know, maybe the collective effectiveness of subcommittees going forward. Because I think the thing I've heard, and again, this is a bad year to use as a, as a point of reference, but what I've heard continually is that, you know, that we have these goals, but what's the accountability piece? You know, John, you, you ask great questions. So it's the, what's the action that follows up? And so when I talk about how we have to shift to be more intentional versus reacting this past year, which Robert, you know, emphasized as well, that's some of the things we have to prioritize also going forward. It changes your engagement as board members in terms of your work, not just showing up to make decisions on, on recommendations.
Yeah, I just, just add a couple of thoughts as, as a former legislator. First of all, when you wade into politics, be ready. If you want to get in there and be political, be ready, because there will be repercussions. Okay, they don't have to like us. They don't have to give us the authority they do and they can take it away from us. So when you wade in, be dead gum well certain, it's important enough that you want to get mired in this.
But I think this year we've noticed, at least I have, and the 30 plus students I had on Zoom calls throughout this year have noticed that our education and the daily experience that we have in school. have noticed that our education and the daily experience that we have in school, just the fact of showing up to school, our safety and wellbeing at school is political. And so we have no choice but to be involved in this. But we as students, we don't have those relationships with legislators to have any influence. And I think that this would be a great sphere to create those connections and those relationships. Because those students are frustrated. They don't feel like they're heard. And when you don't feel like you're heard, you lose your sense of belonging and you don't do as well in school. And so that is part of having a good education system is making sure that those students are heard. And if they aren't heard and the politics that are happening that affect them every day in school, it's going to be really frustrating for those students and we're going to lose a lot of students.
Let me just finish, but.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. And you have, I appreciate what your, your, your comments and I think that you are very important. I appreciate it. I know you are looking out for the best interest of kids. I'm just warning you. What Betty said has some validity in, in, in a sense. Subcommittees oftentimes give you an opportunity not to be so public. Would the governor meet with two or three of us and we could talk about some issues in our office? I think so. You know, does that have to be public then? I don't think so. I mean, there are ways to do things, to manage things that don't have a lot of political repercussions. Do you know, you know how that works? Just as long as I do. Um, so I think there, there are ways to do that better than we have done that in the past. Uh, and I think we ought to consider that. There, there certainly are opportunities. Mike's comments are well taken as well. If you don't contact your legislators by September, October, I didn't even think about you anymore. Okay, let's, if you have some issues, then we ought to approach those issues in the fall. And then maybe we have a, a committee that sees the governor a couple of times during the session.
And in the past, um, the chair and the vice chair have just individually met with the governor and, and discussed. Off the top of my head, I can't remember what they were at the time, but I, I do remember meeting with her and, and in her office.
You remember when, like what time of the year?
I think it was just whenever.
Shan, don't you have to have your bills in by August?
By the end of November, but yeah.
Yeah.
I don't remember.
Okay, that's okay.
Yeah, Mike and I went and met, not you, Mike, uh, Mike Fearon. And I met with, uh, we, we didn't meet with the governor, but we met with her liaison, Linda Fandell. Yeah, so I met with her probably two times or so.
Well, the previous board chair and I went with Linda and met with the governor.
Okay, yeah, I think this time the governor wasn't available, but yeah, so we, yeah, we met with Linda and I met with her on the whole, but. So yeah, either the liaison or.
Yeah. Uh, it's called the subcommittee. We have people that need with the community college. Is that, and is that the subcommittee or is that just?
No, not.
I think it is.
It, it's off of the board, but I think I've created in code, I'm pretty sure.
So then, you know, I think your authority to have subcommittees and do some of your work as you think about your, your impact on policy and your involvement with policy is absolutely within your purview. And I think it's a great time to address as we go through the work session and have conversations at the end. Uh, when you get in those works, uh, smaller groups and talking about priorities, it's a great time, I think, to, to readdress this, which is a much different conversation than we had last year when we talked about goals and priorities. I mean, that was basically spent wordsmithing. Now we have some tangible things and a better understanding of what we want to do. I think because the board is all here, we've had some more time on this, um, we're in a different place. Um, so I think again, this goes back towards really shifting how we do our work and what we see as a function of the board. Did you have your hand up?
Yes. I've enjoyed this last bit because it reminds me why process is so important. Uh, a lot of the discussion about goals are substantive, that there needs to be some sort of process to protect and advance the substance. So during the rest of your work today and tomorrow, tomorrow morning, are there ways that you can internally govern uh, independently or in collaboration with the department that fosters, incubates, protects, monitors your priorities? And so the, the question of why was this not discussed? Uh, it's because there was not a mechanism to, it was not a feedback loop to continually bring, there are things that are, that there are feedback back loop for built into code, the rulemaking process. There's a notice, period, public comment is adopted and filed. So, uh, you know, periodic revisions of policies, accountability. It's on the board to build its own internal procedure about what that feedback loop and how that accountability looks like. So, uh, substance is important, but process is important if you want substance to happen.
Yeah, we've never actually taken the time to do that before.
Kimberley is saying that's, that's the problem. And she's working on one of the priorities in the board. And yet there is nothing that tells her how to interact with the board on her committee.
Yeah. So I just give it in my, my report.
Yeah.
Is this good enough? Here's a slide.
Well, on the, on the DE website, we have the strategic plan for the state board from two thousand seventeen. I was, I told you, we come up with something pathetic.
It's pathetic.
Oh, we used to redo that every year, didn't we?
I, I have one last question. So this bill has passed and it's been signed. And so now we have to deal with it. So how do we as a board make sure like when you are sent, like figuring out how it's supposed to be implemented, right? Cause is that what the department's role is? How can we be involved in that process to make sure that it does as little damage as possible?
Those rules process. Well, there's, there's, there are multiple, there are multiple touch points to continue this, this, continue this discussion about how it's violated to the rulemaking process, should rules be necessary? There's nothing in the bill requiring a rulemaking. So any rulemaking would be advisory rather than wire. And so that really is on the department and the board in collaboration to decide, do we do rules? It would be public policy malpractice, not to do guidance.
Yeah.
And so there's the guidance process. Where the board has a, the board interacts quite robustly on the monitoring and accreditation process. Tomorrow, your discussion of a my people, Davenport. Um, and so there, there are multiple, there are multiple ways for the board to reach the department through this. And then, you know, want to riff off of the last thing that you said.
Yeah.
Because each board member has heard his own view about this bill. I have my personal view about this bill. Folks who've known me for more than thirty seconds could probably. But this is the, I'm an employee of the Department of Education. And whatever I personally think of this bill, my obligate, my professional obligation is to ensure that it's implemented. Uh, and implemented fairly in accordance with its text. So, uh, the personal views, you know, public policy is an aggregation of personal. Um, and sincerely held beliefs about this bill, I think are expected and welcome. But once the department has its, its direction, which cannot vary from the text, we're moving forward. So, you know, I appreciate the comment.
Yeah.
If I were in a different place, I may be.
I just, I just think that since, when there is, yeah, when there is no guidance, like our work is stopped on the Equity Committee. We don't know what we can.
We're going to find a way to get, get, get going.
Yeah.
We're not going to stop.
No.
Stop on equity.
I just think that.
I think that we, I think I should have, I should have, I, if I had to, sorry, excuse me.
No.
If I had to do it over again, I would have, should have, uh, recommend not stopping. And, um, work on things that, because we don't really stop equity. We don't. We live it. We live excellence. We don't stop equity, really? No, we don't. So if I had to do it again and have that conversation, I was like, how can we find a way to keep going and still be complying with the law?
Yeah. And that's really what I should have asked.
Exactly.
That's what I should have asked.
So there's some requirement Thomas about, uh, individual schools that have an issue. Let's say somebody in the school violates the issue, violates the rule that legislature has put out. Is there some reporting mechanism? Does the school have to report to this department or legislature or anybody? Or is it just, don't do these things?
It's a requirement in chapter two. Parallel requirement to two sixty one H for colleges. There is no required, in addition to being no required rulemaking, there's no required data collection. So one of the things that is part of the department how much does the department monitor and how closely? Going back to, uh, Mr. Hall's discussion about individual instances versus broad systemic compliance. That, that is still an open question again, forty, less than forty.
And I think that's, I, and I think that's where, I mean, the, the issue is that a lot of the questions you have, we, we can't give you the proper answers for yet. Um, but we wanted to make sure we could at least go over, I mean, assuming we never would assume that anybody, you know, we, most of you are aware of what the, that there's a bill. Maybe you haven't read the language. So what Thomas was able to do today is read some of the language to you from it. So you're aware of what the context is. Um, and you're aware of the potential implications of it, but we don't have the answer on that yet. So I think the, the process from our standpoint now has to start in terms of what does this mean? And what is the guidance for schools? And then ensuring that you as a board are aware of, of, of how this moves forward as with all legislation that we have to prepare guidance for. This is not different than others. We have to provide guidance for everything. Um, so we want to make sure we're keeping all that in the same scope of understanding as well. Somebody wanted to ask something.
This is a process question. So at this point, the department will provide guidance. Is that the process? If that is the process, does the board have any role in that process?
And, and for, for most of our guidance on legislation, has that gone through the board before? I'm not aware that it has. Yeah.
The, we, we would see the rulemaking.
Now, now think about, there's, there's lots of bills. So, so I think the question is, are you making a decision for one exception or do you want to be involved in the process for all? And since previously you have not been, is that a process change you want to make for every piece of legislation that the department issues guidance on? What role does the board, does the state board have?
I think it's not every piece of legislation, but I think it's every, maybe legislation that touches on our goals and priorities, which I think this one does. And there probably are others that maybe we should see that touch on our goals and priorities, maybe. We're having a huge impact on them.
Well, how does any education legislation not touch on our?
Yeah, I think.
That would be all of it.
How about like a substantial impact on it?
So, and substantial impact depends on who you ask. And so, you know, I'd just like to cycle back to notions of, to the discussion of authority, which was a, a big chunk of the earlier discussion. Who has the authority to interpret the school laws and the school rules of the state of Iowa? And so she can issue guidance without asking anybody, because it is exclusively in her authority. The fact that we're having this discussion is healthy, where those lines are drawn are, it's healthy, but they don't have to be drawn anywhere. And so I think that that's, that's part of the interaction between board and department. Is, is that part of the board's role as an advisory capacity? In guidance creation, it would be solely advisory. Uh, so I would just leave that to the director and her team and the board to decide where that line is and where that mechanism should be. But understand it doesn't have to be aligned at all.
Shan.
So on that note, there's lunch, yes. We're supposed to break for lunch.
So I just want to make sure that the board members are also aware, when we do send out guidance to different departments, board members are included on those emails.
Yeah.
I know you may get a lot of I'm pretty sure you're reading all of that because the stuff we're sending out, it does have a lot to do with legislative updates. It has a lot to do with information that we're providing to districts and it does include guidance. So, and I know you get a lot from us and there is a lot of reading to do, but anything we send out is definitely of importance.
And, and as a reminder on that, please make sure you're checking your state email. Don't assume that it's going to go to your personal account. I mean, your state email is your accountability connection for us. So if you want the updates, make sure at least once a week you're in there because you will get something at least once a week because of the updates. This is good, good, in people conversation, but let's stop for a minute because we, we had twelve fifteen to twelve forty five for lunch. We have, uh, the team presenting at twelve forty five. Um, I don't, is fifteen minutes enough time? Are you guys comfortable?
We can adjust if needed.
Okay. Do we take a good, like solid twenty minutes just to eat?
Director, will we, will we close?